All right. Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, November thirteenth. At nine AM and we'll start our work session. Is there anybody with public comment? In the room? About online? The public is silent today.
And you don't have your hat on?
I've only got one.
Anybody online have any? Anything to add before we start the meeting? Okay. Rebecca?
So the first item on there, the Ag Extension Service District Advisory Board, there were two positions that Sarah had advertised and two applicants that had applied. Tori Kurtz and Janelle Gettis, I think is how you say her last name. We sent those applications to the advisory board and they had asked that. Or they had approved both of them, asking that they would like us to continue with that process and appoint them. And I know that the advisory board meeting will happen prior to you guys doing the appointing at the county commission meeting, but we did ask that they attend the advisory board meeting on the twentieth, just as public, so they can see how that board meeting works and they were in support of that. So those are the two.
I know I know Tori. I worked on her on another board and I know she is definitely on both together.
Yeah, I like her a lot.
I do not know this other woman, but her application, everything looked really good and so I have no problem at all with either one.
They are me either.
So I guess we'll move this to the consent agenda. Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, next. So is this from Will or is this from Rebecca?
I was on there at the last work session and you guys advised that I have a meeting with Will and I did so. We spoke on this matter and just to give you guys a little bit of the backstory. The extension program coordinator was in that position out of class pay when I was put into the position that I'm at and this would keep her at the rate that she's at. So we discussed that.
Perfect. Yeah, it sounds like it's within budget and I think the reasoning is good.
Are we going to consent agenda this one too, or is there?
I think what I would recommend as we've done with some of these these two-step increases in the past is just ask that the board authorize me to sign the personnel action form outside of outside of this meeting.
I make a motion to authorize Will to sign sign this pay increase outside of the board.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Brad?
Good morning. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Brad Haynes, Creek County Road Department. And I'm here today to ask for authorization to purchase a two thousand and twenty-five international four axle heavy-duty spec lowboy truck and retrofit the existing lowboy truck, two thousand and three lowboy truck with a Omco manufacturing water tank for water tank truck, flush truck that we have it got damaged this this fall and was a total loss and we had to, we need to get it replaced. So there's many options here. We've looked at used prices and most of the used truck vehicles are five hundred thousand miles to seven hundred fifty thousand mile vehicles with no warranty or no no maintenance records or anything. So there's, it could be, you know, significant costs and breakdowns and stuff. So we're opting to change our two thousand and three lowboy truck, retrofit it with a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. Bought brand new by the county with a new water tank and to replace that truck with the new twenty twenty-five international. I did give a third option, lease option for the lowboy truck. The twenty twenty-five of numbers. It was recommended by the financial department to go ahead and buy it outright and not do the lease.
So we have a question. So you're talking about Omco and Omco is your higher bid. What, what? What wants you to go to Omco? What's your reasoning between Smith and Omco?
Uh, Smith, Smith equipment only has an option of a PTO side draft pump for water draw and so they cannot put it on the back of the vehicle. Our current truck that we had is as a rear draw and it's a hydraulic pump and because most of the streams and areas that we draw off, we have to back into, we can't get close enough to them by pulling up there to drop the hoses in. And we'd have to have extensions of hoses and stuff on. So that's, and the price of that Omco tank is significantly more, but it does give a lot more options.
And there, and as far as used? You just can't find one?
Not one that has all the options that we have on our current truck or the one that's being total loss that we have multiple six spray heads on it and most of the trucks that I've been looking at all over the United States are only a four spray truck, two in the back, two in the front, maybe one side cannon on the side. So it just didn't have the options that we, we have. And also the Omco truck is also coming with a N S T fitting to be able to fire trucks to come and fires and stuff to be able to draw off our truck if need be in emergency situations. So it has just had a lot more options. So yeah, that's about it. And they, and they are under state contract. The truck is under state contract. It's actually sitting in Portland right now. But it is, it is a truck that's built and it is able to be purchased immediately. We have a hundred and eighty day build period for the water truck that puts us about June. So, and we will be needing that prior to that. So as fast as we can to get this project going. It's a, it's a lot of moving parts.
Outside of the town of Shasta, there's a guy that builds water trucks and he has them in every color of the rainbow. I always was very we would drive by and I'd go, well, look, Andy, there's a purple one this time. We don't get every color of the rainbow on this.
No, it's white.
It's gotta be plain old white. This was asking.
We can get, we can get the, the tank to get a custom color, but the truck is lowboy truck is.
I'm just, I'm just adding that into my little chuckle. But yeah, I always used to like to see and you knew when it was really busy in construction because he only had two. Then you knew when there was a lag in construction because he got the twenty line.
Exactly. Yeah. And right now is kind of the build season for all the fire starting with the fire companies and stuff and construction work. So the lowboy truck is going to be about a thirty day fix because we're going to have a turnkey delivered if we go this direction of the lowboy truck. It's going to have everything added to it. So we don't have to do any retrofitting at the shop or up fitting. Everything's turnkey.
Nice to question. Brad, I think we talked about this, but I know with regard to the new purchase, it says, this is a non-budgeted acquisition. How, how, how does this fit into your budget? And I'm sorry to finish that.
Well, for capital, capital outlay projects, we had two hundred or three hundred eighty-six thousand budgeted. We spent, we did the new life on the road grader, which is in process right now. We purchased a new blager pickup and we got two extended plows for the plowing, plowing in the winter, so we don't have to have a wing plow. So we can not make multiple trips down the roads and stay off the roads, get off the roads faster for traveling public. So all that money's being spoke for. So this is not in this budget at this time. So we're going to have to save money somewhere else to purchase it.
And so finance, why did they not think you should do a lease?
They're actually online. Jamie, would you set that please?
Can you kind of explain, Jamie, how this fits in?
No. Can everybody hear me? So Christina and I looked through the paperwork and kind of the short of it is the advantage for the lease would be that it spreads the cost over a couple of years, but at the end of the day, it does cost quite a bit more. About at least thirty thousand. You know, depending on if there's any other terms there. So we're weighing the additional costs against just paying for it outright. Road department is, is facing the need to look at every expense because expenses are rising faster than their revenue to cover it. And so we see it as a better use of resource to not, to not take on the additional costs of the lease over time. So, I mean, you guys discuss where you see those pros and cons, but that that's what Christina and I felt when we looked at the information. As far as the budget goes, you know, it would be, this wasn't part of the plan, you know, we had hoped the water truck wouldn't need to be switched over this year. So there is plenty of appropriation for operations in the current moment. No need to make a budget resolution today or, you know, in the next couple of weeks because Brad has everything he needs to keep operating. However, it is likely that a budget resolution would be needed before June thirty, depending on how the rest of the year plays out. If everything else goes according to plan, then this is above and beyond. If certain things go under plan, then there may be enough bandwidth to absorb this. However, it is a large expense to absorb and not likely. If that makes sense.
So if we can't absorb it, what you're saying and it goes where we do, are we okay money-wise as far as spending this?
Yes. So Brad has a lot of money sitting in both contingency and reserve. And the amount needed is well within the ability to just do a simple budget resolution. It wouldn't be the more extensive supplemental budget. He has plenty in contingency that we could just move over with. You know, with an order of you. You know, it's still something the commissioners would approve, but it's simple.
Thank you, Jamie.
Nice. Finally. Get your truck, get it outfitted so you don't have to put the plate stuff on it. So I'm trying to get it built. And attain Omco. I understand where you are with Omco and
They're both, they're both local.
They are. I think you'll get a little better what you're looking for with Omco. They do fit a lot of fire trucks.
I think there's some things that does great work and is kind of a good thing.
Yeah, the, the, the the draw drafting for both, both tankers was, was a selling point was the rear draft because we wouldn't be able to back up to the streams and so.
Does this go consent or should this be discussed again next week? I guess that's a legal question for you.
I think you've discussed what the recommendation is today and it sounds like the consensus is that recommendation would be accepted. So I think this could be put on the consent agenda. And just the consent agenda item would say, you know, something to the effect of, you know, approved recommendation of staff as to acquisition of lowboy truck and retrofit of water tank. So I can put mine together with Brad and Sarah about what that is an item would be.
And is that timely enough for you?
Yeah. The truck is actually being held for us as a verbal at, at right now. So I was going to let them know sooner than later because they're selling as fast as they can because it's already built. And we're running on parts for building other trucks. They're like June before we could get another one if we had to have them built.
I like the idea that we can use it for fire also because obviously that's not going to go away.
Yeah, it's a big topic. So and we use the water truck, you know, primarily seven months out of the year for multiple things, our road blading, asphalt repairs, flushing culvers and just general water.
Yeah, well, I guess you guys are going to put her on the agenda.
December fourth.
Look at that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be because we'll have That is, can you wait that long then?
Well, can I give the vendor a letter of intent for the purchase of it, of the?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would not recommend giving a letter of intent unless the board of commissioners says yes. Because I suppose there is the possibility that between now and December fourth, something happens and then the decision is no. But we've already sent in a letter of intent saying the decision is yes. So I, I think probably the safest course is either act today or I mean, you can tell the, the company that commissioners aren't planning on approving at December fourth. But I wouldn't do anything in between.
How about we split this thing up like a really neat split up anyway, because it's three separate things. We have a water truck purchase or a lowboy truck purchase and we have the water tank issue. So I would make a motion to go ahead and purchase the truck from Peterson Equipment. And be done with that one and then I'll come back with another motion for the consent agenda for the same thing.
And then I will second his motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
You don't need a motion to send it to the consent agenda, do we?
No, it'll just be the Omco.
And we'll make sure that that price is, is with all the options too. So there might be some added on options in my price stuff. We don't know at this point. I had to get this stuff all added up in three days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, John?
Good morning, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Splendid. Thanks for letting me join remotely. This is an update on our issue with getting the septic treatment permit transferred over to us. Last time we talked, we were discussing that the county or Mukseptic, they were looking at attractive land that was owned by Commissioner Barney. Since then, that prospect has fallen through. That's the bad news. The good news is that Commissioner Barney no longer has a conflict of interest. So he may unrecuse himself from himself from this discussion. But here's where we are. As a reminder, we need to get the permit in our name by Christmas Eve. We were looking at using the landfill, some, some, some land up at the landfill, talking to our DEQ contact, Carl Makepeace. And Jackie might be able to chime in here. I don't know how much of the land this, this covers, but apparently a good bit of the potential landfill property is upgrading from monitoring wells for the landfill. And our DEQ folks are cautioning against using that site to prevent the possibility of nitrogen leaching and triggering the monitoring well. That would jeopardize our solid waste permit. They said that it might work in the very short term. As for any other sites, the car make piece said that he will need to come down and do a personal inspection and walk the land like he did at the landfill. So we need to get some, some land locked up as soon as possible. He also recommended that once we do have a piece of land picked out before we get all our ducks in a row with that, as soon as we know roughly which land we're going to use, then to submit the permit transfer application and that would be the very first step in this process. But again, he, you know, we spoke earlier, he said we should get this stuff in, in November. So the, the timing is very tight. We've been looking for other land. There is a the possibility of some property out at Quell Valley Ranch. That's down Milliken, past the Gala Solar Site. The Sten camps, the, the people in Mukseptic, they have been talking to the owners of Quell Valley Ranch. Yesterday they went and they actually walked the site and had a long discussion. It sounds like there is some potential there. The, the landowners are concerned, have some concerns about their, their cattle and nitrogen that we need to get worked out. There are I think issues about the, the payment that they would receive and the exact nature of the, of the relationship between the parties. I, I called Kurt yesterday pretty early in the day, left him a voicemail. I haven't heard back from him yet. So we don't know yet whether or not that is, is going to be viable. Jackie's also been talking to the city. Jackie, did, did you get a chance to talk to anybody over there since yesterday?
I left Casey Kaiser a voicemail yesterday, hoping that he would get back to us by this morning. I haven't heard anything else from him.
Okay. That would likely be another short-term solution. Jackie, do you know how much of the landfill site was upgrading of the monitoring wells? How much would still be available to us?
I haven't got the exact number from Carl, but I believe we were looking at roughly a hundred acres and it might possibly be half of that that would be available to us.
So that would be a very short-term solution. Limited number of months, I think, is, is how, how that would work. There is a wild card. I guess I should bring up, I had an unrelated phone call yesterday with the attorney for Newson, they're one of the solar developers here in the region that we were having a conversation about some of their solar projects and, and timing. Personally, I've, I've lamented many times that the solar companies have all the goodie EFU land around the landfill locked up. And so near the end of the conversation, I, I brought up our issue because I know that one of their sites is, is right next to Two Springs Ranch, or I think they have a lease on Two Springs Ranch. And he acknowledged that, yeah, they're the ones that started this whole process and that's why Two Springs Ranch had to send us the, the notice of termination. So then I asked him and he said that they, they probably would have some land for us if we needed it. And so I, I told him I, you know, calling back after talking to you guys, but you know, they have a lot of the EFU land in that region and down Milliken locked up under contract and they said they'd be open to it. A lot of their land is, you know, they, the timing of their projects, at least for a short-term solution, there might be some potential there. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as a possible way out or way forward, at least in the short term. But we need to, I, I think the board needs to make some firm decisions. Like, like I said, we we have to get this done very quickly. We don't have another meeting until December fourth. And so I just have some questions for the board, I guess, before we proceed. The first is, are we a hundred percent sure that we want the permit in our name as opposed to how it was before with, with Two Springs where the permit was in their name? I know that I think that I've heard the commissioners expressed some desire to be more in control of this process. And so that's my first question. Are we a hundred percent sure we want this permit to be in the county's name? I don't think we have much of a choice right now.
I, yesterday I was over at the city and I think it would behold us before we make these decisions, Jackie, to go and talk to John and you. And if you want, I can go and talk to Casey Geiser because they had some ideas on maybe a solution there. So that might be a good thing to do. I hate that we are going to December fourth. I wish we were next week, but I think that we need to take their ideas into consideration. Don't comment.
I'm just taking a note. Jackie, you think you can set that up next time you talk to Casey?
Yeah, for sure. Casey and I have everything pretty much squared away if they're willing to do it. I was just waiting to hear back on if they wanted it treated or not and how many gallons I could accept and things like that, but I'll get a meeting set up. Who all wants to be in on that?
It'd be me, you and Commissioner Hermak probably at least. Commissioner Hermak, one thing about that that Jackie mentioned to me yesterday is there is apparently the treatment for the sprouts requires the addition of cooking grease to their septic waste to be processed. But apparently at the city, they cannot accept cooking waste. And so that's a small other little hiccup that we would need to consider if we're going to be using the city as our, as our source here.
Yes. I say it was very brief. They had some ideas. It was Steve and Casey. And I just, before we make a decision, I think we ought to take into what some of the things that they had to say. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, you know, I hate to, you know, and maybe we do change our mind. I'm not sure. They just made some very good points to me yesterday. But I need you two experts to weigh in.
We'll definitely be there that. So if we are, that kind of brings up some other questions. Timing wise, we, we can't wait until December fourth to come to you guys with the lease. And so I, I think we either need to anticipate setting up a special meeting to, to sign a document, or we need to delegate authority to one of the commissioners to, to execute documents on, on the county's behalf between now and December fourth.
Either way. Either way, I'm fine. The only thing I would say is the, the last one, the FEMA. I think there's some, going to be some information coming out at AOC that we may have to act on that as well before the, the first in December on that too. So it may be worth having a meeting at that point. Because there, there's an organization talking about how none of the options are legal and property owners and it's something we're not hearing from the state. And so they're threatening to sue counties if if we choose any of those counties and cities. And so they said that they're going to deliver kind of a checklist of, of why that is illegal. And I think that would be good for us to see. And then make a decision if we are going to push, I do, I think it would also be helpful to be able to push back, use something like that to push back against FEMA and DLCD locally. But I, I like Will and other people to see it before we
So talking
decision on that.
So talking about another meeting, so the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we typically don't meet.
It was on, we talked about it and it was decided that we were going to scratch it.
I'm wondering, I mean, obviously I'm the cook. I would rather scratch it, but should we possibly maybe reinstate that meeting for just maybe these two topics?
Why don't we, why don't we did it on Thursday?
That's Thanksgiving.
Of next week.
Because I'm coming back for you, Gene, Thursday morning and so are you.
Yeah.
You want to do it in the afternoon?
We could do that. Or yeah, we could do that. Or we could do the, like, first thing in the morning before we leave too.
So that would be November twenty-first.
Yeah.
And so John and I would normally be at the
Yeah, and so will, I think.
So that doesn't give, that doesn't give, for the FEMA thing, it doesn't give time for that presentation.
I, I would air on the, on the Wednesday morning before Thanksgiving, but again, that's going to I really would not like to, but business is business.
Since it's a special meeting with Tuesday or Monday? Be more convenient?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm actually in the other country, so I, I should be able to.
Well, that's a bit of a problem.
Yeah. That's what I was hoping. Maybe that Friday, what about that Friday?
Friday?
Oh, I think.
John, given the Given, given the timeliness of the, the septic issue, does it make more sense just to authorize one of commissioners to to take whatever exception necessary?
I think it does because we don't know, I, I don't have a calendar or a crystal ball to know when we're going to be able to come to an agreement. It might not, you know, it might be a day or two after. We set the special meeting date. If we set it now, things are like very much in flux. And so the more flexibility we can have on this, I think the better. But if we do go that route, we can put some parameters on things. I have just a couple more questions that I, I want to get the board's direction on and we can come back to this part of the discussion. The second is do we want to be the less seed? Do we want to be the tenant for this property? Opposed to how we have it now with Two Springs Ranch, if we find a piece of land, do we want to be the tenant instead of, say, the Sten camps being tenant?
I would prefer not to be, but I think we have to do what we need to do. And I think we talked in the past about how if we were initially, we could then shift it to somebody else once we had a more permanent plan. And I'd be willing to do that as long as the long-term goal wasn't for us to be in charge. But I think it's, we don't have a choice at this point.
Yeah, I would rather stop being charged of it also. I'd rather it be contracted out. And so the other question I have is you're talking the city and you're talking this. Are we talking two different programs or are we talking and getting rid of that and taking everything to the city? Or what, what are we talking?
So my my conversation with Casey at the city, should they agree to do this? This was more of a short-term emergency type deal. just to get us by. Casey wanted us to continue to look for property and be able to do the land application. They don't wanna take this on on a permanent basis, was my understanding.
Thank you, that's straight that one right up. So we need to continue to pursue the outside source with Muck, and I would prefer that they just start doing it.
I will, you know, go along with whatever we need to do.
Because I see this as more of private business rather than the county being involved in it.
I will, I will say, Commissioner Barney, that in my discussions with the sten camps yesterday, um they're a bit discouraged, uh, uh, and I I don't know if they have the, it might be a lot to ask them to take on a land lease and get the new equipment and get this all set up, uh, especially if um, the the price isn't worth it to them, which brings up my next question. So um, as we discussed before, currently the rate that we charge is twelve and a half cents a gallon. Two and a half cents of that comes to us, and then the remainder goes to Two Springs Ranch. They handle the waste, they pick it up, they take it to their land and they apply it there. Um, with this new arrangement, we need to figure out uh, both how much we can how much we should raise prices basically, but then how much we can offer uh, the landowner. Whether they're just giving us the land or whether that that includes um uh, them applying it, and so uh, I know Commissioner Barney kind of looked at this and and so Commissioner Barney, you were saying maybe three to four cents per gallon for for dry land and five to six cents per gallon for irrigated cropland would be what it would take to pencil things out? Is that my memory correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, like I said, we need to be able to offer something, have prices to offer potential landowners for these leases. And so I just wanna make sure, as we figure the numbers out, I need to figure out, I asked the sten camps to get us hard numbers on what's gonna cost them. Um, either as just being a handler, being a handler and a plier. Uh, but then we need to know what we are comfortable offering um, a landowner for their acreage. I I do anticipate bringing in a fee change order um, to be effective January one. Once we do that, we are stuck with that fee change for at least the next six months before we can change it again, so we wanna make sure that the number that we come up with is gonna be as close to accurate as possible and it'll be enough to make this worthwhile for both the sten camps and the landowners and the county. So um I guess my question is, do we have authority in that price range um to reach out to the landowners if it's if it's dry land, three to four cents an acre, uh, just for us using their land, um, and then for irrigated, five to six cents an acre. Is that, are those prices okay with you guys?
Well, I have a question. So Jackie, when I talked to you, you had said sixteen and a half percent, or sixteen and a half cents per gallon was what it would take to get to your property. Now, what happens when it's a farther property? Are we looking at, you know, and you need that, was the five to six cents incorporated in that sixteen and a half cents? I guess, when you and I talked, was that land already incorporated in sixteen and a half cents?
So that price at sixteen and a half cents was the sten camps uh, number to haul to Brian Barney's property. And I believe the agreed upon price for that, that that's where that sixteen and a half cents came from, and that's what the sten camps needed. That was our portion included of our three and a half cents. And then uh, to lease the land. So going forward uh, we're kinda open, the sten camps need to provide their price for hauling and operating, and then whatever these land lease payment options are. So I don't have a exact number for moving forward. That that price was based off of uh, the property they were looking at for Brian.
But the land was incl- that all, it was a, it was an inclusive price, I guess is my question.
I believe so.
Okay, which in Deshues, right now it's at sixteen and a half cents. So one of the things we talked about is how mu- much does that rock the boat? If let's say we went to twenty cents, we had kind of briefly talked about that.
Make it really worse as well.
Yeah, and that's an, that's an alternative we may need to consider is, you know, is the cost prohibitive, because like I said there in Deshues are at sixteen and a half cents. That's certainly, if we had to haul to Deshues, it's certainly not gonna be
Yeah.
sixteen and a half cents. So just to get that in your head.
I got a friend who owns a company, I can call him and see.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is just to get it in our head of what we're looking at at price dependent on, you know, like Palina, I probably have ground, but you got an hour out there and an hour back. That's gonna add a lot of sense on with the with the cost of fuel and anywhere tear on the truck. So there's
But I think the other, the other option is that we won't be able to take it anymore.
I I I
A lot more devastating.
I agree, but I'm just saying, I want you to get this in your head that when we're talking about price, it, that was a fixed rate to where we know it was going. Now we go any farther we're gonna have to look at it different.
Well, let me, let me, I'll call him today and get that in front of Jackie.
But I don't see any reason that you guys can't negotiate that and come back and, you know, I mean, because how are you gonna do it if you don't have are you ever gonna involve any land if you don't have somewhere to start with? I mean, in my opinion, you can't. So I totally agree with that you two should go out and yes, and you kind of you have kind of a basis of what you're thinking. And Jackie, you know, you're the one that told me for Deshues, so I mean, you know the game that, you know, you're playing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as 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 you visualize this, currently the pie is getting split two ways, and so um moving forward, the pie is gonna have to split three ways. Uh, our our costs are pretty much fixed, so we can, we can figure out what that is. The the land costs are are somewhat fixed. What's gonna be most variable is the handling cost dependent upon how far away our location is. Uh, the good news is that I think that Commissioner Barney's property um, out in Juniper Canyon is farther away than any of the ones that we're gonna be looking at now. Uh, the Quail Valley Ranch is is a little bit closer, um, and then New Sun's properties are all closer, and so I think if we look at the sixteen and a half cents as a ceiling, I think we can probably work with that. All right, so that brings us back to the beginning. Do, um, I I think it would make sense, sorry, Commissioner, I think it would make sense to delegate authority to one of the commissioners to kind of handle this with Jackie and I, so we aren't dependent upon uh, the timing of a preset special meeting, but uh, I'm open to either other direction. It it might help if we have a hard deadline to make make us work faster, but I don't know.
But I didn't get a motion to
You wanna do that? Or do you want me?
I, you're fine, I, or yeah, I don't, I don't care. It doesn't matter, whatever you wanna do. But I I think a commissioner can handle it, and I understand now, understanding the city and what they are and and the land, so I I'm good with whatever.
I'll make a motion, Brian. You don't do it?
I guess, I'll do it.
I'll make motion that Suzie worked with John and uh, landfill.
So I might recommend that the the motion be explicit that um, the board of commissioners delegates authority to Commissioner Hermrich uh, to negotiate the terms of a substantial lease.
I second it. Am I supposed to second up my name soon?
No, it's fine.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Will?
I'll ask Katie and Katrina join me at the table.
You wanna share the bad news equally?
They don't, they don't want me talking about it. I'll, I'll screw it up.
I do, that'd be great. Thank you. Commissioners, um, my name is Katie McDonald, Senior Planner. Um, coming back to you again with the, an update for the FEMA pre-implementation plan at this point. They are asked, so FEMA is asking for a very informal decision um, to be emailed in, let your Region Ten representative know which um implementation, the the PICOM, the pre-implementation compliance measure, your jurisdiction is looking to do. Um, they're not asking for anything official. If you do not get your decision to them by December first, um, your jurisdiction will default to permit by permit. These are uh, pre-implementation because they are in mitigation for the existing loss of habitat from sixteen species of fish and killer whale from a bio- uh, biological opinion that was done through NOAA. Um, so there's lots of acronyms. I just put these on there because it's, it's always helpful. There's a lot in this one.
I was gonna say, is there a quiz on this?
It's, it's multiple choice. We're all good. You're all good. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So go ahead and uh, go to the next. So what they're basically asking for is by December first that counties choose one of these pre-implementation models, and so starting in July, when they started coming out with this stuff, it was um, kinda heavy handed. Like it it was their uh, language that they were using, their um slides, their messaging, it was like a little put off, right? Like, it just kinda struck it. The language in the last month has been a lot softer. Um, they've received a lot of uh, communication from Oregon, since this is Oregon specific, right? So our governor, legislators, private interest groups, other legal entities, um they've had in-person workshops, they've had Zoom workshops. Katrina and I have both attended probably at least three, maybe four of these workshops to learn more about them, learn about the different you know, why are we doing this? What do they really need? What are they asking for? And they've really um the FEMA representatives have been very um, acknowledging that it was fast, that, you know, they have been talking about this for a long time. However, it like, kinda, okay, talk, 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 now do it. Right? And and didn't really take into account the timeframes that Oregon has for land use changes, didn't really take into, if it's not in your code, can you implement it, can you enforce it? How does that work? What are they actually looking for? So they've had to really go back and kind of reexamine and and replace where they are, and then based on what they've heard from these workshops they're redoing some of the language. So for instance, this first, um not the first one that prohibit all new development. Well, we know that's not really an option, right? So the other two options are to update, um so their model code update is based on the Oregon model floodplain code, but it has an additional section in it that talks about development in that special flood hazard area. So based on information and feedback that they've heard from lots of different people, they're actually redoing some of that and changing some of the language and um, aligning more with what it is they're actually looking for, which is no net loss. Which is kind of a goal when you do floodplain anyway, it just is how and what degree is uh, is asked for. Uh, the uh, third one is a permit by permit habitat assessment. So this is for every permit that comes in that would qualify for this assess, this process. It's not gonna be for every floodplain permit. It's not gonna be for, it it's, like I said, when we originally talked about this, it sounded real scary. There's twelve hundred tax lots in our area and they're all good. No. After they've kind of revamped it and used a different language i- it's not gonna be that intrusive for us, because we don't have the type we're not, we don't have a bunch of wetlands, we're not in the valley where you have farming right up to the Willamette Valley or something like that, right? We have more of a buffer. So those are the three options that they're asking. And just an informal email saying, hey, I think this is what the direction we're gonna go. If it doesn't get there, they're gonna default us to the permit by permit.
So on the permit by permit, if it's my understanding, there really isn't anyone certified to be a habitat assessment person. So if, and that was from your last thing, so if you get that, you don't really have anybody to call. So we don't know who that is, right?
I'll get to that. We'll get to that. So go ahead and go next slide. So let's touch briefly, I touched briefly on this model code. So Oregon developed a a model floodplain back in like twenty nineteen and updated it in twenty twenty, and it is a rather good description of, there's updated definitions, there's updated um links to codes. The one that's in our existing code is from two thousand and twelve when the last flood maps were adopted, and it doesn't really capture some of the things that it should capture. So um, however, this model, the FEMA model code has an entire additional section that goes into it, and it's specifically about the work in the SFHA, right? So it's that chapter specifically, if you are in this special flood hazard area this step is going to apply, and a lot of it is construction standard, right? That, okay, there's a lot of information. Yeah. Yeah, so that's the model code. We aren't there yet. We don't have time to do that. We'd have to, um, it's a multi-step process. Uh, we'd have to vet it through um, the building department, through planning um, and other areas to make, planning commission to make sure that it's gonna align. So this isn't really an option as staff sees it at this point. Next slide. So this is the permit by permit, and excuse me. Okay, hopefully I'm not gonna be so hoarse. So the the last time I came, it was very much like, we don't, you know, we don't even know who would be qualified to do this. They had a four hour long, they've given multiple um, webinars and in-person meetings on this. And one of the things that came up was it could be a landowner. If I owned my property and I've been farming it or utilizing it for a while, I know what native species are. I know what kind of fish they are. I coordinate with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I know that the habitat is this. And I wanted, and I'm displacing this much amount. But I also work with these entities and say well, I'm gonna replace at a two to one. So I take out one tree and I'm gonna put in two that are native species. I know what those are. That's gonna be up to the jurisdiction to say yeah, that person, we have ODFW, we have, we have a, you know, basically, how do you build your file? And how do you document to show a known net loss, right? So if you're gonna do this work here for watershed enhancement maybe the, one of our community partners, maybe the Crooked River Watershed Council can come in and say this is the habitat that's there, this is what's being, you know, that we've looked, we've reviewed at what's being done and the proposal, and yeah, we're good, like they're good. That would be an example of someone that FEMA would then, on an audit, say yeah, because you've built your file. You've you've shown them the process that you went through to make your decision. So they've really taken that step back from that really hardcore like, has to be a certified professional, how, we don't know who that is, we don't know what, you know to like, okay, counties and cities and other jurisdictions, you know what works for you and your community. And you know what resources you have, and we're gonna let you decide how to meet a known, no net loss standard. So
So so before we move on from that, that that's pretty concerning to me, because I've seen ODFNW shut down major projects here because they were unwilling to make a decision or, because it's not just like a small landowner, it could be like a whole area of lush wabs redevelopment, if any of that's in the, is any of that in the floodplain? redevelopment, if any of that's in the, is any of that in the floodplain?
Up there?
No, down below.
Down here, that's city.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, once we start signing on to this en masse, then I think.
That's, so no, I have questions. So you take Meadow Lakes where I am. I know my house is not a hundred and seventy feet from the river. I know it is. It's maybe fifty feet if I'm lucky. So now I wanna add a room, or there's two lots on Meadow Lakes that were developed by the people that developed the entire street that have been kept vacant. What happens to them when they just simply wanna build a house right next to the house next door to them? What happens in those scenarios? And you're saying that city, so we don't need to worry about them or, but.
I don't, so.
How does that work, I guess?
So.
And I've been farming next to a river.
Right.
For all these years, are they gonna come and now say, I need a bigger buffer and shut, you know, how does this all work out?
So at this point, what we're hearing is that they're not gonna change the mitigation ratios. And I'm not sure how they're gonna do the hundred and seventy feet riparian area setback. I don't know. That does not preclude development in there. They're not saying that you can't develop in there. You just might have to meet a construction standard that is. And I don't know this.
It might be that you gotta go down the street and plant forty trees or put it in a rock bed for the trout.
Right, right. So there may be mitigation.
It's not mitigation.
Yeah.
So you feel that it would still be, okay, a viable thing that you could do. Just an additional.
But isn't that just gonna increase the cost of government that's already increased?
So so I think there's a distinction between what I am talking about because my mind is on rural development. Urban development is gonna be how the city works with their code. And they already have these issues. And and to my knowledge, they already work with a known net loss. If that's where they go. But that's not for me to say because I'm not in that code. I, they've adopted the Oregon Model Flood Plane Code and have been administering it. So their decision, I'm looking at it from the county's perspective. And where we are see, gonna see the impact on that is not necessarily gonna be in urban development. Where the the closest setbacks that you're gonna have to that type of a thing are in very, very few areas right along the Crooked River, right? We have some development out there around the wetlands through the Lone Pine Valley, which is mostly ranching and haying at this point. And um some other, no, I think that's about it. However, we, Katrina and I both have had, if you go to the next page, I'm really hoping that these links work. They're links. So here's our fish that we're protecting and the southern killer whale. So if we, if you can, can, hopefully the link on the fish will work. Okay, he never wants to open. Okay, so this, this actually goes to the uh FEMA BiOP and you can you can right-click on it and copy the link and put it in the um Chrome and it'll pull up this presentation.
It won't let me right-click on it.
Okay. So sorry, I'm so sorry. So it's, it's the fish goes to the NOAA Fisheries, which the intention for, from FEMA, right, is that they're looking to the protection identified changes needed to protect sixteen species of fish and the southern resident killer whale. And when they did that BiOP, the NOAA um mapped it. So if you'll go, if you'll click on the killer whale. That one worked. That one worked. So the other one doesn't, the other one would work and then it wouldn't work and then it would work and I'd be like, no. Okay, go ahead and hit okay. All right, so these are orange.
Sometimes it doesn't switch when we switch.
Okay. No problem. This map is super cool. There's so much on it. I could really, I could really spend a lot of time on this. Anyway, um, go ahead and X out so we can see. So these, um, in the layers over there, you can see that these are the um the ESA endangered species, this is why I put this in here, endangered species act, um, critical habitat and fish habitat. So um, if you scroll in right above the Oregon or zoom in a bit, right above the name, you can see the Ochico National Forest there embended. Yeah, go ahead and zoom in again. So we may have mapped floodplain in our area, but we have very little that's actually identified on the NOAA Endangered Species Act. So if we have a floodplain application that comes in and we can build our file and build our, send out our notices, who we need to notice, send out for comment, who we need to comment. And that can be through local partnerships. It can be through property owners. It could be through ODFW. It could be through the natural hazards um committee, like the, my brain's just kinda, I'm just kinda thinking all over the place here. But we're going, what Katrina and I have considered and we've requested is specific technical assistance with FEMA to say, our county, most of our county is not in, have these orange endangered species act.
Which is good.
Which is, which is valid for us, right? We're not in some of these other areas that do have that. So what level is going to pass an audit for us? Right? Because that's really what this is. What do we need to have to build a file to make sure that we can continue to protect our citizens uh with national floodplain insurance, right? So this is one of our questions that we haven't had answered yet. The December first deadline is approaching. If we don't do anything, they're gonna default us to this permit by permit. We don't get very many development permits for floodplain. And in fact, a lot of the development that we get is in mapped irrigation canals. Because FEMA has mapped irrigation canals. Well, we can talk to the irrigation districts. Are there fish in those? No? Okay. Does this apply? No.
So you really actually would prefer us to default is basically the answer that you feel is the best for our county?
At this point, with the information that we have, yeah, I do. And I think that that is going to be, um, I think we're gonna continue to learn more as we go forward and through the process. Uh, but and Katrina, you can chime, if you've heard anything different, but the, what we've heard, what I have heard is that yeah, you know, we understand that there's been, that it was pretty rushed, that, you know, Oregon land use has very specific dates and very specific public involvement and very specific things in written in there that you can and cannot do. And their ask didn't necessarily take into all of that into account because Oregon is pretty unique in its land use laws. So um, and they, and again, they didn't need an official action. They don't need a, they, they're not asking for like a, a formal motion or an official letter or anything like that. It's um just an email, hey, I think we're gonna go with this. Or nothing, and then they would, they would just default it. Um, for, for people who do want to do the model ordinance and they are at that point and have gone through, there's a, at least one jurisdiction. I believe Wasco County has taken it to um, the model ordinance update to their planning commission already. But they still won't meet that December first implementation. And FEMA has said in one of the last um meetings that, hey, that's okay. We understand. We know you're working toward that. So we'll just do a permit by permit. There's not, i- it's not as heavy-handed or as like hurry up and do it now and we don't know how it'll play out. So they've um, they don't intend, they're not changing timelines, but they're kind of been like, okay, we understand you all need to take a breath and figure out how this is gonna work. Um, so the next slide is our next steps, which has all dates that have passed, which I just noticed. So um.
And Tindaboo has his hand up. Yeah, he said his hand up for a while.
Yeah, Tim.
Yeah, no, I appreciate uh if it's okay for me to ask a couple of questions. Um, back on uh the last slide you showed with, uh, you had only clicked the two boxes, uh, but you did not click the salmon and steelhead box. Uh, those are two fishes that are administered by NOAA. Uh, and with all the work in the Crooked River and Upper Deschutes, I wonder why you did not click that box. Uh, because that would then include a lot of streams in Cork County uh that do flow through places. Um, I'm a little hesitant to rely on ODFNW anymore. They seem to be gaining uh regular, more and more regulatory authority. Uh, I just discovered that the dry drainage that runs within less than a hundred feet of one of my houses uh is now considered a fish-bearing stream. Uh, and we have to prove that it's not. Um, the only way we can approve that it's not is a fish biologist from Clamath Falls has visited our place in April during runoff uh to verify that there's no water in that dry channel. It drains the south slope of Grizzly. Uh, and it dumps into an OID canal. Uh, so there is and never has been connectivity to any fish-bearing stream. So again, just the bureaucracy of the mess. Uh, that's all tied into the new forest accord uh that Oregon has. I also discovered the other day that now for private landowners or any of our groups that work with them on stream work in order to get a fill and removal permit uh before, from Division of State Lands, before they even apply uh for that permit, uh they have to get a letter of permission uh from ODFNW to proceed forward. Even though ODFNW as part of DSL's review, uh still will have input uh into whether or not that fill and removal gets uh put in. So just sort of two examples of relying on a state agency that seems to have expanding regulatory authority without necessarily uh the personnel to respond in a timely manner, adding to the additional costs of any sort of activity that a, a landowner might do. And, and again, back to the question of why didn't you click on, and maybe I missed it in your explanation, the steelhead and salmon button uh as a regulated uh.
I don't think it works on our, our computer.
Yeah, no, it, um, oh, sorry, Tim, were you?
No, I, I'm just repeating myself now.
Okay, so when, um, great questions. And the salmon and steelhead toggle, when you toggle that on and off, it didn't change. We're in the lower, I think, believe it's the lower basin um drainage. So that is what is the overall, but the actual mapping for salmon and steelhead um within that, within that NOAA didn't um produce any results. The one thing that this map does show is that it shows projects. So you can, like I said, I could spend hours on this map. It's really neat. But there's um a project, the piping of Makai, Makai Creek is actually listed on here with all of the um information that has already gone through NOAA. So you can see projects um that are reflected on this. Um, we already work with ODFW for riparian area in the land use code and um having them not necessarily identify fish-bearing streams, but identify high watermark and what that setback is. And if that setback can be reduced, currently it is a hundred foot from a um high watermark. But with ODFW setback, a sign-off, it can be reduced to fifty feet. So we already work with them. Um, I don't know. Again, this is, we're kind of in a, we're in a learning curve. And what's gonna work for our jurisdiction? And if it is working with a state agency or if it is working with the um local agencies, um, your canal, your irrigation districts, your watershed council, the natural hazards, like those types of jurisdictions to then be able to help the landowner that wants to develop in a special flood hazard area, what resources are available to them? So um, I don't know if, if it would be a requirement. It wouldn't necessarily be a requirement, but we could provide notice, just like we do with other land use actions.
Yeah, I, I think we're concerned that this is just the first step of, of, of larger process, which we've already been, the frog has been boiling. And I think as soon as we go to this, they'll expand the maps and put in more extensive, and I understand if we don't, if we don't agree to it today and the first comes, then, then we put people in a really bad spot. But I think we should wait and hear what this group has to say. And I can get, I think I can give you some of the information ahead of time to look at before we even head down there about what they have and what they're saying. Because I, I also, I think what you're telling me is that the that's probably a really good way to sue about this is that we didn't give landowners the, the enough notice and different things to change. And you, you know what I'm saying? I think there's a lot of rules that they're breaking that if we break those rules, we're gonna be on the hook for those rules.
Yeah, I think they're asking us to, I mean, at least initially, they were asking us to, and it was probably out of ignorance of Oregon's land, because they were asking each impacted local government to just do it without consideration for the rules we need to follow. Uh, yeah, I'd be very curious to know more about this, the, the position. It sounds like a group is taking, um, but I think for, for our immediate sake, it sounds, well, I don't wanna speak for the commission, but I, if, if, I'm getting the sense that maybe you would prefer us just to let the December first deadline pass. We default to permit by permit, which is, you know, probably what the only other option to consider at this point.
I think that's where we wanna be anyway, at least for right now, is permit by permit. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be.
I don't think, I don't, if we had the option, we would, yeah. I mean, what, I mean, there is the option, but the the option is to say, we don't want FEMA flood insurance in Cork County. Uh, which is, yeah. So that, otherwise, we've gotta go through the process they've laid out for us.
And the last time I was here, I told you that we would, that I was gonna do a work session with planning commission on this. Um, and it wasn't necessarily on this. It was on the Oregon Model Flood Plane and adopting that into our code, the already established um flood, Model Flood Plane Language. And then I kinda followed up with, hey, there may be more coming down um regarding this. But at this point, let's at least get our code up to a current standard that can be administered better for everyone with more knowledge.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the separate will bring us more in line with what the City of Prongel.
Yes, yes.
The whole community will be more consistent.
Are those state requirements that we would be adopting or is it making us, putting us in a position that would be closer to the federal government?
No, the model, the Oregon Model Flood Plane Code has existed for.
They, they did it in twenty nineteen. They updated in twenty twenty. And um. And, um, the city already administers this floodplain. It has updated definitions, updated code links, updated language. It's FEMA took that model and said, oh, we can just add our language into it. We're not talking about that. We're talking about the state one. So in essence, yes, it would because that's what the federal government used to implement it or to, to prepare their changes for it. But we're not looking at that. We're looking at the states.
I mean, as long as it's state law and that, I mean, we have to live under that. I don't wanna add additional things that would increase the regulation.
So that's.
Through the federal law.
That's what, yeah. And that's what we work through the Planning Commission with.
Right, so.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, thank you. We might as well take a two second break, two minute break. We're back.
Let me stand up, cause my hip gets up there while it's stowed up. Sitting, I had my cousins this weekend and so we ate and drank and slept and got up and ate.
Alright, sorry about that. Quick break. Um, Will, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a, just a quick reminder tomorrow morning, we have a joint work session with the Planning Commission to, um, discuss the transportation system plan. The, the consultant from the project management team will be here. Uh, so I just wanna remind.
And is that at the annex?
That's at the annex.
Okay. And then, uh, if you remember that Janet Hutchinson called me and she wanted you to forward whatever material you had about that.
Okay.
She's on the city council for Primeville. So now that you brought it up, you're reminding me, I was supposed to tell you that yesterday.
We'll do that.
The updates. I need to call what's all out, but, uh, anybody from the public on the screen or in the room, wanna weigh in on anything? Okay. Our county board commissioners will now meet in the executive session under ORS 1926602H to conduct deliberations in persons concerning legal and labor negotiations. Under ORS 1926602H, consulting the council concerning legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely infilled under ORS 1926602A considering employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives in the news media and business staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session except for under ORS 1926602D under labor negotiations. All other members of the audience are asked to represent in the news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to say, except to state the general subject of the sessions previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to the session and welcome to the audience.
Making you one second to switch it.
Read your thing, right?
The current county board commissioners will now meet in the executive session under ORS 1926602H to conduct deliberations in persons concerning legal and labor negotiations. ORS 1926602H, consulting the council concerning legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely infilled or under ORS 1926602A considering employment of a public officer, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives in the news media and business staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all members of the audience, except for under uh, ORS 1926602D. All other members of the audience, representatives in the news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the sessions previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, the room will be.
Do I get Will?
I'm good if you want to, but I, my guess is he's.
Yeah, I, I.
I just am asking for it open, so.
So commissioners, before we move on, um, in a prior reading, the board commissioners has, um, placed the responsibility to carry forward the negotiations on the employment agreement for the permanent manager positions. My colleague, John Isler, John Isler has presented, um, the potential that, uh, he, well, no, he's not, he has brought to our attention that there's a potential for a conflict of interest. And for that reason has, under ORS Chapter 244, asked the board of commissioners to um, recuse him from further management of that responsibility. Um, I um, I want to hear that, hear that forward in his place. Um, the conflict of interest, or at least the potential conflict of interest has to do with the idea that if uh, there is an appointment to the county manager position, then there would be to be a vacancy in the, to be developed in director position. Um, and John has said that there's a potential that he might be interested in applying for that as an internal candidate. For that reason, he said, it's probably safer to err on the side of caution. Um, treat this as at least a potential conflict of interest and ask to be recused under those particular statutes. Uh, any questions? Okay, so you do have a new funding agreements. I guess the question from this juncture is, uh, what sort of other revisions might be interested, or the board of commissioners might be interested in? Um, the exhibit A, talking about job description, does make reference to the county courts and the board of commissioners. And make reference to position of judge instead of commissioner. Are there any other revisions that the board commissioner would be interested in proposing in this juncture?
You know, I, and I think the termination clause was done well. I know that's been a hang up on other, other things.
Alright, anything else?
So we need to make a motion to, to the clerical, or I, I don't know if it's clerical charges. How do we handle that?
If, if the only changes are to update the nomenclature in exhibit A, I don't think that that is going to be a roadblock to execution if all the other divisions are acceptable. Give me a second and we'll see if I can craft a appropriate motion.
Thank you, John, for your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Did you get that?
Well, everything came from the sandwich factory, but I've never seen the little crepes. Have you ever seen them?
Are they ginger snacks?
No, they have like a toffee chip. I could eat like a dozen and I have to hold my salt back. Oh yeah, they're good. Like you're talking about that caramel cream.
Yeah.
Put that cookie in the car. Yeah, I had never tried these. I had berry pie about 11 o'clock last night. I was laying in there, and I thought, dude, this berry pie, he's a berry pie falling, so I had berry pie.
What kind of berry?
Maringberry, I don't know where we're going here. And it was just what I needed to go to sleep, so, you know, sleeping pill or meringue berry pie. I think that was helpful.
Well, Commissioner, if I'm ever doing a story of meringue berry pie, I'll give you a call.
Okay, okay, you can. At 11 o'clock, it's, it's very good to get you to sleep.
Your wife makes a good meringue berry, or not meringue berry, but huckleberry.
See, huckleberries are so.
Cheesecake.
So small, they're, they're just so difficult to, yeah, at least a maringberry, yeah.
They got, they got like that tart, like the.
A huckleberry.
A huckleberry is a good tart.
Yeah, no, they're good. It's just one time someone brought me, what a week old. Brought me a box of huckleberries and I made like jam, well, and stuff. Work all day, you know, do those, they're, they're just so small.
You're a huckleberry. We never get a great huckleberry milkshake except for.
So commissioners, uh, based on, I think I have understood, I suggest a motion to approve the employment agreement with Van Vactor with the county manager position subject to the declarative provisions to the nomenclature in exhibit A to the current county terms. The acceptance of Mr. Van Vactor of those revisions and to authorize the board of commissioner members to sign the finalized agreement outside of the.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
So sir, I can, uh, type what I just said, so hopefully I, okay.
Do we have any other?
For 2H, it sounds to me that that was just an update, so no action item, and for, um, and D, I don't know. The board of commissioners wants to make a motion, this juncture. Did you listen?
It was that, that they had a postponed date.
Well.
So there you go. It just seems nonsensical to me.
So then, upon us talking, then I might write in or to be a motion uh, to authorize staff to correspond with the counterparty to propose a, um, amendment to meditate.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I guess we did make a motion.
Yeah, anything else?